And Compensation Committee of the Coffey County Board of Education. And we're looking today to look at some information about the needs of our school system. Looking at salaries, compensation, and what that might boil down to. We do have Ms. Holly Matthews, Ms. Beth Hinch, Mr. Scott Hansert, and Ms. April Melton. Mrs. Frida Jones is also on the committee, but she's going to be, I think, on screen with us or on screen here. She's not feeding well, so we'll go from there. All right, who wants to start? Holly?
Don't look at me.
Scott?
Scott, you go ahead.
Well, I think the biggest thing that we've, we're trying to do is to, to kind of balance out the, the salaries between the, the lower end of, like, we've got our custodians. It's, you know, it's making fourteen dollars an hour. You know, and they can make more than that by going to McDonald's. And some of our, some of our assistant, you know, teachers aides and so on and so forth. Trying to get our building, building level salaries up. And that's what we're trying to do today is to try to figure out how to do that. And still have the, what have we got, April, five hundred thousand with the TESA?
So the five hundred thousand can't be well. There's five hundred thirty-five thousand that have to be, that has to be used on classified, on certified raises. So none of that can be used on classified employees. Our, that has to be used on certified. And that has to be used on existing certified, no new, no new teachers.
April, is that enough to cover the three percent raise for the teachers this year?
No, ma'am. So we will rely on the additional increase in TESA as well as any increase we do, we get from the county.
I think Ms. Melton had told us about five hundred and something thousand.
So to give the teachers, as I've worked some numbers, to give the certified, and this is just certified employees. This is not admin. This is just certified employees in our schools. To give a three percent raise is going to cost around eight hundred thousand dollars.
That doesn't include admin, like principals?
Admin, if you give a three percent raise, is around a hundred thousand.
Extra.
What about supervisors?
And then, well, that's admin. That's anybody that's in admin position. So that would be supervisors, principals, assistant principals. So anybody that's classified in a supervisory role. And then for our classified employee to give them, to give them a three percent raise is around two hundred thousand. That's the numbers I've worked up, just because I thought you guys would ask.
So eight hundred thousand for certified teachers, not principals, not assistant principals?
That's correct. So that would be any kind of, your coaches, anybody that's involved in the school building. That would be non, not in the admin position.
And that's three percent?
That's three percent.
Okay.
And that does include their step. So that would be step and the three percent.
Certified teachers would cost us about eight hundred thousand dollars for, if we're looking at a three percent. Admin, about a hundred thousand dollars. That would include the principals, assistant principals, and supervisors.
Yes, sir.
And then the classified at three percent would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars. So that's, I've got one point one million. Is that what y'all come up with, close enough?
That's what I have.
Do what?
That's what I have.
Okay.
So the, the classified that you said was an extra two hundred, does that include our transportation, food service, everything on the par profession?
Right, you mean, you see on that pay, pay scale, that would include those people.
Where do our school nurses fall? Are they certified?
They're certified.
Okay.
They're paid on the certified scale.
Okay.
Well, it's like, most of them aren't. We have one that is paid from the classified scale. Because she's not a certi, not a nurse.
Yeah. So, yeah, one point one.
So we've got eleven nurses total over the school system.
I have to look at the numbers. I don't know. Hold on, I'll tell you.
We've got eleven of our county, right?
We've got nine certified, and then two that are...
Two nurses that's classified and eight that's certified.
We have eleven.
So basically, that's five hundred and thirty thousand that we have to come up with in our, it's not already budgeted. The five hundred and thirty thousand, that's already, that comes in.
That's included in our increase from the state funding.
So that, that's, comes in. We know we've got that. And so above that is the five hundred and thirty thousand.
So the five hundred and thirty is what we have to use on, right, on teacher?
No, but I'm talking, you said, it was, from what I can figure, it's two thirty extra for you, so.
And then also, you know, we have other things, like, other needs that come up. So like, today, we've been in, in, talking about new positions and wants and needs. And we also have to look at those things. So you think, like, we got nine hundred thousand, I think, additional TESA dollars this year. Or I'm sorry, for twenty-five, twenty-six. But, you know, we talk about art teachers, that, that adds additional positions, plus supplies, plus whatever. And then you talk about if Sped has needs, where, if they, we need to hire a new teacher, a new EA, depending on the needs there. So like, there's a lot of needs that we've talked about today that, you know, that have to go in. So the one point one, well, the nine hundred thousand gets beat up pretty quickly. We talk about a three percent raise and then the needs of the, of the, of the system.
All of the TESA, all of the TESA dollars?
All of your TESA dollars won't be completely finalized until June thirteenth, until the June thirteenth reporting period. There's nine reporting periods. So it will, it will vacillate a little bit. And the reason is, the reason is because it's enrollment sensitive. Because every TESA dollar is going to follow the student, no matter what. And they break it down to the, the illustration I've always used is one reporting period is equal to one dollar, which is twenty days. And so what they do is they will nickel you, and each day is five cents. And that's how the, that's how the report comes out on, on everything with TESA. They, they no longer, it used to be under BEP that we got an average of funding periods two and three combined. Then we got an average of funding periods six and seven. And that was how everybody was funded now. And they did that because those were the two funding periods in each semester, where most of the students, where your highest number of enrollment would be during that semester. So, but now it follows the student to the day, by, by day, and by student.
So is that where attendance comes in?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Keep in mind, too, that overall, we are down in attendance this year. Is that right, Dr. Neelis?
Overall, overall enrollment has dropped on grades six, twelve, from July thirtieth at the beginning of the year until now. The number I ran was last week, and we were down from, and way, the way it works, the business, the business rule is that any student that is enrolled on the last day of school is automatically enrolled on the first day of school. That's how we account for all of the students in Tennessee. And then there's a process we have to use to withdraw, to withdraw the student. But they all appear on the roll at the beginning. And I know it's, right now, now, elementary has, elementary has stabilized and picked up a, a teeny bit. And I, I know elementary's continuing to do that. So they have, they have stabilized some, and they picked up. But this year, there's a two hundred, two hundred sixty-one drop in grades six, twelve, from July thirtieth until, what was last Friday or Thursday, March the thirteenth, I think, was the date that I ran. And I, Dr. Powell may have gotten some more numbers from Ms. Pate today, but I don't know.
What was the number, two, what?
It was two hundred sixty-one less in grades spread out over grades six, twelve. High school started off last year with, on the, on the enroll, I believe, thirteen seventy-two. And they have twelve sixteen, or twelve seventeen right now. See, middle school started off with eight hundred fifty, and they have seven hundred ninety-six, or seven hundred ninety-five. And Raider Academy started off with four hundred forty-one, and they had three hundred ninety-two.
So are you talking about students enrolled, or are you talking about absences?
No, these are students that have, that we've...
Oh, we've lost them?
Yes.
That are not hearing anymore.
They're not hearing anymore. Oh, yes.
Do we know, uh, go ahead, Frida.
Uh, what would be the reason for that? That's the entire...
A lot of it, a lot, a lot of it, I can, a lot of it, I can tell you what I, what I get. Of course, we have the, we have the withdrawal codes. The state uses the withdrawal codes. I can always tell by that, too. But most of the time, at the beginning of the year, we have no-shows. And that's, that's very prevalent at the high school. Out of the high school, if I remember correctly, and I'm, I'm pretty good with my numbers, I believe fifty-seven, I think fifty-seven of what the high school had lost were no-shows. Meaning that those children have probably moved during the summer. They move out of state. They move to another school system. And we track that down. I mean, I use, I use every kind of tool that I've got to track down students. And Mr. Knox at the high school does a real good job with that, too. And we track them down. The other reasons, the other reasons, though, mainly are, you know, there, there's usually some kind of dissatisfaction. They'll, they'll run to homeschool and say they're going to Pen Foster and all that kind of stuff. Because a lot of times it is, they'll claim to me on the phone, "Well, I got bullied." And, or, "I didn't like the, I didn't like the punishment that I received," or something like that. "And I just met with a parent before coming in here." And in grade nine, begging them, you know, "Don't do this," and explain why it's detrimental, why, you know, "You're this far into the year, you need your credits," things like that. And I made some headway there. So it's, it's those kinds of things that we get. Those, that's the biggest, those are the biggest reasons in that area that I get those drops. But I, but you do need to know that TESA is going to follow. So what was up, and it'll give you an average at the end. I'll get an average of the nine funding periods, and that's how they'll determine everything. It will be an average of all nine periods. And that's how everything will be determined. Like, the five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars that's set aside, restricted fund for existing educator raises, that may drop just a teeny bit more, not a lot, because that's on Coffee, whatever Coffee County's portion of the statewide ADM is. And that usually, that's usually around zero point four three percent of the entire, of the entire state. And then that, that's how that hundred, from that hundred twenty-five million dollars that's in that pool, that's how all of that is calculated.
Are you able to tell if there is any sort of trend, like, are we losing them to other systems in this area? Are, you know, are, you, you mentioned you could see if they went to homeschool. Are we losing to private schools?
No, we're not losing. We very seldom lose to a private school. Most of the time, most of the time, especially in gra, in the, in secondary, I'll just say in secondary, it's the Pen Foster where they can do the, where they... And a lot of times, it's a, it's a some sort, there's a some sort of factor or variable in there with dissatisfaction. They're dissatisfied with how something's been handled. And then you try to talk them, you try to talk them off the ledge.
Yeah.
That's very concerning, that over two hundred kids are dissatisfied.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is.
It can be.
And the, the parents are moving them somewhere else.
Yes.
What is this Pen Foster you're mentioning?
Pen Foster is an on, it's a category three online homeschool. It's accredited. The state recognizes currently thirty-five, there's about thirty-five category three homeschools that the state will recognize. They are accredited. And in order for a student, if a student wants to come back, which we welcome them back, if a student wants to come back, then the, for, if they use a category three accredited homeschool, then all of those credits transfer in. There's no, there's no problem whatsoever. But the state has to put them on their seal of approval. And usually, that means they're, they're accredited. There's about five different agencies that the state will recognize. And once the homeschool proves that they're, that online homeschool proves that they're accredited by one of those, then they give their stamp of approval.
So they probably test and do all that?
They do, they would do that, they would do that all on their, all on their own. The only time testing's involved with homeschool is independent homeschools, category ones, and that's grades five, seven, and nine. Now, they have a choice. They don't have to come to this district to test. They don't have to take the TCAP. They can choose. They could take a California Achievement Test. They could take Stanford. They could take Iowa. They could do, they can do anything. They're not bound to the TCAP.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
When you get time, could you give us, and not tonight, but just, you know, sometime this week or next, could you give us a breakdown of the, the grade level of students that we are losing?
Yeah.
Okay, just so we can have an idea.
I'll give you the withdrawal code.
Yeah, okay. That'd be great, thank you.
Dr. Keith, are we losing any, any of our students to virtual schools in our system?
Um, no, the virtual, the virtual school works, the virtual school works in entirely, an entirely different way. They have to apply to the, for admission into the virtual school. I, I would imagine, I'm sure their window is open right now for admission into the fall semester coming up. But they have to apply for that. And the way the virtual school is set up, it usually works much better for them. They, they only have a certain window, about a two-week window at the beginning of each semester that they will take somebody else in. And that's for continuity and, of course, grades. There, it's, it's a little bit different.
So you're saying there's not, we haven't lost that many students to virtual schools?
Well, we wouldn't lose, we wouldn't lose to our virtual school because, see, it has its own school number, and it remains in the district. So, no, we wouldn't. That, that would, that is not, that, that would be, we don't lose students there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what you're saying, April, is that the teachers, who, who did you say can't use the TESA, TESA money?
So the TESA funding has to be used on existing educators. So it cannot be used on new. So like, if we were to hire the six art teachers, we cannot use that funding to hire those six art teachers. So that we have to find that funding elsewhere in the budget. So then next year, if you look at next year, we hire those six art teachers. They give us a allotted amount that we can use for additional, for teacher raises. We could then, because they're existing, they would be existing in the budget, we could then use them in twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So they have to be an existing educator, licensed educator.
Not new hires.
Not new hires.
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Shores and myself and Ms. April have been working just about all day on requests that principals have sent in and administrators and supervisors, looking at what we feel might need to be additional teachers for next year, what we may not need. Where we may have, we may have to move some from place to place. And we'll try to have that finished tomorrow. We've been working on it today, but we need to talk to some other folks before we finalize what we feel like is needed based on our numbers as of today, I guess, so to speak. But we're not seeing, I don't think, Ms. Shores, we're not seeing a whole lot of, there's a few that we may need to put in, but it's not a, not a large number, I don't think, at this time. Is that pretty well correct?
With the loss of students in the, the upper schools, is it possible that some of those teachers are not going to be needed in the upper schools? And they can be reassigned to some of the elementary schools?
Uh, maybe yes, maybe no, depends on our certification. Because some of the, some of your, you middle school teachers might be able to be in elementary without too much difficulty. Many of your secondary teachers are certified in subject areas. So they may or may not have the elementary certification and/or the middle school certification. Some of them could. I'd say the majority of them probably don't have elementary education or middle school because they're certified in a subject area. But that's a possibility, you know, looking at that, and that's what we're doing.
So the nine hundred thousand, April, that is everything we've got to do whatever raises beyond the five hundred and thirty?
Right, and so basically, that's just an estimate. So that was our first estimate. I'll get another, we'll get another estimate at the end of March. So next, sometime next week, I would think. So we'll just see how that comes in. Could be more, could be less. So, but then...
If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, so if we give a three percent raise, we're at like one point, a little over a million dollars. That's a three percent across the board. If we give a three percent raise to the administrators and the classified employees, we're at three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three seventy-eight. If we give a three percent raise to all the teachers, we're at six hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
That's not what I have.
That's what, you know.
Eight hundred, I said around eight hundred thousand to give.
So you've got around three, three eighty-six for the pay raise for administrators and classified employees?
Do I have it?
Is that what you've got, or have you got that?
Yeah, I have, I have two, around two hundred thousand, and so around three hundred thousand for admin and classified. And then around eight hundred thousand for certi, for certified employees.
But we have five hundred and thirty of that already designated.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So nine hun, nine hundred less the five thirty-five that, yeah, would leaves...
So you're looking at about five hundred thousand to give everyone a three percent pay raise?
So I guess, my question is, where would we get that extra five hundred thousand?
So we would, I don't have county funding yet. And there's two reasons for that. It's still really early for them to give me county funding because I do a calculation for them. I have to do a calculation each year to see how our funding is split between cities, the two city systems and us. So that hasn't came from the state yet. So I usually get a document from the state that gives me those numbers for systems, for each system. And so I do that calculation, and that goes to the, usually goes to the county. And that determines how we get funded. So I don't have those numbers yet. They're usually pretty consistent with what we've had in years past. So you make, you guys may get a budget that, those numbers aren't firm. And they'll be pretty close to what we've, we've budgeted for last year or what we're expecting to get this year. So the additional funding will have to be made up with county funding.
Tax dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So what you have, when you, when it's, money is split with the county, the county, it's based on ADA or ADM for that system. So the county would get biggest portion of that, of course. The town home would get the second largest portion. And then Manchester City would get the smallest portion of that. And you have a ballpark for what those might be. At one time, I knew, but I'm not sure what they are right now.
Yeah, we're meeting, we're, they're meeting that number, though. We get, I can, I can look. I'm estimating around fifty-two million dollars in revenue. That's just a really, really rough estimate. Nobody hold me to that. And thirty-three million, thirty-three point four million is state revenue. So the rest would come from county, county and some other things, like a little other things. But, so we get around twenty million-ish from county each year, a little under that. But, you know, in the grand scheme of things, like, will that revenue cover a three percent raise? Will it cover all the, you know, the, all the supplies and the diesel and the electricity costs? So if it can't meet that, if revenues can't match to expenditures, then you have to, as a board, decide, do you want to go into fund balance to fund this next school year? And typically, we do, but we typically, when we present a budget, we typically present the worst-case scenario. Say this is your, we're really conservative on revenues. We're really, like, not conservative on expenditures. This is the worst-case scenario. This is your potential worst-case hit. We've never hit fund balance for anything we've ever said we've hit fund balance for. So usually, it's hard to, it's hard to balance a budget with, with just revenues. Some districts can do it. We've never presented a budget to where we can do that. However, we've never hit fund balance, and we said we were going to. So that's just kind of some other things for you guys to know and think about.
I've got, and looking, looking back and looking at some of the, the things that, that we have gone over, why do we have some elementary principals that work two hundred and twenty-one days, and the other ones work two hundred and fifty-seven?
So elementary principals work two twenty-one. That's what they've always been on. I have some here. And then two fifty-seven is for our secondary. Because they're pretty much in the schools all year round, getting, trying to scheduling because they have incoming students, students outgoing, trying to work with each other to get all the students where they need to be. I'm speaking for you guys, I don't want to. Come join me up in the microphone.
Okay. And at the high school, Paul, we've got one assistant principal that works two hundred and eleven days, and the other two is at two twenty-one. Yeah, we, why, yeah, why is...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
You didn't tell me that.
That makes sense.
I have, I have a question. In the past, whenever someone has moved from a two hundred calendar day salary to a two twenty-one, or whatever it is, or to a two fifty...
Two fifty-seven, from two twenty-one to two fifty-seven?
Does that, does that require board approval?
We did bring it, so it was part of all the work, calendar changes that were brought, I think. Maybe, I can't remember what school year, but it was either this last or the one before. So there was a document that was prepared, and it, and it explained who was moving to what calendars. And that's when we eliminated, I think we went from seventeen calendars to maybe seven or six last year. So all that was...
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
All of that was presented, I think, to the Compensation Committee, Committee, and they recommended it to go to the board. And I could go back and look and see when it was, but it was...
Well, I, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't questioning any of that. I was just for clarification, that anytime an employee in our school system gets their calen, you know, gets their days increased, that requires board approval.
So we, we typically, anything that involves compensation should get board approval, should get, should go through Compensation Committee meeting. This Compensation Committee meeting should recommend that to the board. That's how we've handled it in the, in the past, I know, since I've been here. Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So April, down to bottom line, if we give a three percent raise across the board, do we have it?
Um, that's a hard question. Do we, is it fully funded? No. And I'm still working numbers, and we haven't put the needs in that we've talked about today. I haven't, I haven't done that. It's, we're not going to meet revenues, so we're going to have to go into fund balance. And then also will be a decision on how many art teachers the board wants to go with. I think we worked on that before this meeting. No, we're not going to have the revenues to do everything we want to do. It's just, is how willing is the board wanting to go in the fund balance? To, to truly give that three percent raise and to meet the needs that we need to meet.
Okay. Question, have, now, I know last year, everybody got a seven percent. And I'd hate to see that be, okay, you got seven percent last year, you don't get anything this year, if you know what I'm saying. I'd hate to see that. Has, has the board ever voted for less than three percent?
Um, I think, prior to me, there's been years, there's nothing given, so.
Okay.
We don't want to do that.
No.
You know, and I think I speak from the whole board. We don't, we don't want to do that. We're just, I, I walked over.
No, 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 I totally agree. We don't want to do that, so I'm trying to see...
No, I'm not saying that at all.
No, no, I, I know you're not...
What is feasible is what I'm trying to figure. What is feasible, is what I'm trying to figure.
Kind of what I do, and I, like, you know, the direction from the director is to build what I, what we think is feasible to present to you guys, and what we think that we can sustain, and that's usually, there's several options that we usually build, and you guys have options to pick from. I started with the base of three percent, because I knew we needed the three percent to get us to where we need for the fifty thousand. I've also worked on a four percent, it doesn't look as good as, I mean, it doesn't look good for four percent. And then I've also worked on a flat amount, so.
A dollar amount.
To give us, to get us to fifty, but it, that's a little less feasible than maybe even the three percent. So I will probably try to present those three options unless Dr. Powell, we look at those, and I plan to sit down with him this week and look at those numbers, and see if there's anything else we need to think about, or anything else you might want me to work out, based on what the numbers look like. And then basically, those options are given to you guys, we'll talk about them. Ask all the questions you wanna ask, and I'll try to give as much information as I can give about what's in those budgets. And then basically, you guys, it's up to you guys to make the recommendation on what you want to do.
My hearing, April, that you're saying that irregardless of, of what we do with salaries, we're still gonna have to go into fund balance?
I haven't worked a two, or a one, or nothing.
I understand that, yes.
And there's a possibility that one of those three options could not make us have to go to fund balance.
But even with fixed charges, and how they're gonna increase, you're probably gonna have to go into fund balance, irregardless of what you do with salaries. That, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Even if we did have to, which none of us really want to, if, if we had to go, say, to the two percent, we really can't do that with the, the, the teachers, because we've got to get it up to that. So it's gonna really mess you up, right, if, if we do a two percent, say, for a certain group, and then well, there's a three percent for the teachers, that's gonna put them in a different.
Any raise we can give this year will help for next year. Um, there is an alternative plan that I would not like to do, that there was di- different situations worked up, to where you back in, you take from the bottom, go to the top, and then give a percentage raise. And everyone would get like, you know, just a small raise. I don't wanna do that, because that's really messing with the pay scale. But, um, there is options next year, if we can't give, if we can't get to the fifty thousand. Um, but I'm still, it's still really earl- like, I'm still reviewing, and so. And believe me, I review every line fifteen hundred times to make sure it makes sense, and I'm not like, missing any funding, and I'm not, no, the line's not overestimated, but what you guys see, can you please keep in mind what you guys normally see is the worst-case scenario? That is like, if funding is, you know, revenues come in absolutely lowest, they come, they come in no higher than last year, other than our state funding. And then our expenditures are worst-case scenario if this happens, so.
But the possibilities are, if you drop that percentage down this year, you would probably have to raise it next year in order to get to fifty thousand.
Or go to a different pay system.
Configuration.
April would have time by then to figure those out.
I built a flat, I built a flat budget to get us there, um, this year. Um, my only thought was to try to build a, like, half that flat, or like, two thousand of that flat to get us there. But, um, right now, the twenty-eight hundred that we need, or twenty-seven fifty-seven, or whatever it is, to get us there is not, I don't think, I mean, I'll present it to you guys, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's what we need to do.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't it brought up about to get our, our teachers' minimum to fifty thousand? That it would be about a five percent increase, and we had to, um, pay seasons, or whatever, two years, two years to get them there, so. We're talking about doing a three percent, but if the total percentage to get them there by the required date was five, could we do, is this even an option, two and a half this year, two and a half next year? And meet that requirement?
No, I think it's.
Have you, have you run the numbers on that at all?
Is it two forty-seven, two forty-three, is that what the top one on that scale says?
Forty-seven, two forty-three.
Yeah, forty-seven, two forty-three.
I don't know what two and a half would do, I'm just saying, if that would give us a half a percentage relief this year.
So if you do five percent, that would put us at forty-nine, six oh five, I think it has to be six.
Is it six?
And so that's.
I don't know why I was thinking five.
I think that's why.
We were gonna do three and three.
My initial is the three, to go get the three.
I don't know why I was thinking five.
And then I thought, well, if we can do a three and a four, that gets us so much closer for next year, and it still might be possible, but, um, I, I'm still working on it.
Okay.
We're, we're working on it too, I mean, we're, we're trying to work, get some different, very, very, you know, varies across the state from different school systems. This is, this is tough, and, 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 and everybody in the county knows about this, and a, a lot of you principals are sitting here, we, we get it. But if we're gonna start taking away from, and we're gonna ask our taxpayers to start paying for some of the salaries, and y'all click me, correct me if I'm wrong, y'all heard the same thing, commissioners, and with the seven percent raise that y'all got last year, or that the school system got last year, and then if you get another three percent this year, then that's a ten percent raise in two years. There's not too many county employees that's got that. So, so, no, I'm just saying that, you know, what we have to do is, you know, we, we don't only work for you guys, but we, we also have to be, you know, good stewards of the money for the other people in the county that's coming and saying, and they're asking salaries. I don't know. You know, and I don't, you know, and I don't wanna do that, you know, I don't, Bedford County's got all their salaries on the website, people's going to websites looking, well, what, how come their salaries are not up there? And, I, we can't answer that, that's.
The salary schedules are on, I'm not required to post salaries, salary schedules are on the website, and those are open book, I give those to, there's an agency that requests those, requests those every year for me, and I pro- I provide those, and those are published with, I guess, somewhere in the state.
Yeah, it's on most districts' websites.
Yeah.
Their whole, like, salary, whatever you make.
No, 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 the, the schedule, the schedule, yeah. And, and that, but I think Bedford County maybe, they may, do they actually post their sk- their salaries? Okay, I mean, I, I'm just saying the schedule, the pay schedule is usually. Just the ones that I've looked at, so that's, I think, pretty standard.
I think we might be able to compare our classified salaries with other county employees, but I don't think we can compare our certified people with anyone else in the county, because of the requirements that are necessary in order to do what we're doing, to be educators, so to speak.
Uh, I agree with Dr. Powell on that.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
She agreed with you.
Okay.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Powell, and, and I agree with that.
You're talking about getting to the fifty thousand.
Well, I missed the word in general, salaries in general.
Just talking about salaries in general.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I've had teachers come to me, um, and talk about how we need good teachers in this system, badly. And, um, in order to attract them to wanna come here, good quality teachers, we need to stay up here. And I, I, we have to keep that in the back of our minds, that good quality teachers aren't gonna come here for a pay cut, and they're not gonna come here for the same pay.
I think the thing that we're gonna have to be careful about in the next couple of years is this fifty thousand minimum, because we're probably getting teachers in our school system now, that are in other counties, that are coming here because of our salaries.
Yes, we are.
But once, once every system in the state has that fifty thousand minimum salary, then it, it's, it's gonna be more difficult, I think.
We gotta come up with an incentive.
Keep what we have.
And I guess, like, what we've always, and what, you know, 'cause I've only worked with Dr. Lawson, I know how to pre- but what we've always tried to do is, our money's in our people, you have, you give, you know, you.
No doubt, we know that.
Eighty-five percent of the budget is in our people.
Yeah, labor.
And if we have the funding to give to our people, we should give to our people.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, because there's gonna be a day our fund balance, because if you're not, if you're not going into, if you're not close to going into fund balance, or going into fund balance for your people, and you're building that fund balance, that can, the county's gonna look at you and say, well.
You don't need it.
Pay that thirty-five million dollar school, you got that at fund balance, go ahead and fund it from there.
Yeah.
And then where does that leave you for your, where does that leave you for your people?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm for all the people, so I'm, I mean, I know.
We are too, but we, we have to, we have to walk out of here, we have to walk out of here too. You see what I'm saying? I hope everybody understands that. That we have to walk out of here too, and, and employee, or people out in there that's paying taxes, and their land taxes, and every time, whenever, we, everybody just got there paying their land taxes, you know, well, what's everybody making?
And I'll say, this office is an open book, and so is the schools, and if they want to know that, they have, they have every right to come out.
That's right.
Well, I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna pa- if you're gonna compare salaries, you, you, you have to compare classified salaries, or certified salaries with other school systems, you can't pair them with other
No, I understand.
Other positions in the county. Classified staff, sure, I know we're, we're scot with that, yeah, yeah, I think we're okay with that.
But I think what, trying to tell people outside of here, I guess, probably, is, is trying to sell that to taxpayers is the problem that.
And finding that balance.
And finding that balance.
'Cause you've got taxpayers, you know, that expect us to be fiscally responsible, and, and you know, seven percent rubbed a lot of people the wrong way.
But I'll say, we probably, we gave that seven percent, and our estimate was to go into fund balance, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and we're not gonna hit that.
Yeah.
So I don't think we're gonna hit fund balance at all.
And not only attract new teachers with our salaries, but retain.
Hmm.
We have teachers leaving, I mean, all the time, in the middle of the year, and when a teacher leaves in the middle of the year, or middle of the quarter, or middle, or halfway through, the students suffer, I mean greatly. They, they probably don't get anything else for at least the rest of the quarter, if not the rest of the year. And then we have trouble finding somebody to come in and replace them. What do we need to do, and, and this is a whole different discussion, to retain our good teachers? Our bad ones, you know, not saying that we have any bad ones, but maybe, well.
There may be some that are questionable.
Maybe. I would, I would hope that most, though, are.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, um, but I think teacher retention is just huge, and we've had a little issue with that, I think.
And like I said, that's gonna become more difficult in the next couple of years.
Yes.
With this state minimum salary schedule. Here to four, you could pretty well set your own schedule and so forth.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, I can't be there. Um, I think there's, the first priority we need to look at is getting those teachers that aren't, uh, up to the fifty thousand required by the state, that we've got to do that, so we've got to look at a, a method of getting them to that point. And then once we do that, then we can look at what we can do with all the rest of our employees.
Yeah.
Because that's mandated, even though they're not giving us the money to do it necessarily, we're still mandated to do it.
Yeah.
And then another concern I have is that we've got to look at retaining our students.
Yes.
Because that's how we, uh, that's how we get our funding.
And we get paid.
And if we all lose that many every year, uh, that's scary.
Yes. And, and maybe retaining teachers retains students.
Right, right.
It's kind of dependent on each other. But, uh, if, if I'm jumping ahead here, you guys stop me. I was thinking that one thing we wanted to talk about was creating that third pay scale for central office and, and admin, or however it shakes out, however it wanted to be divided out. I don't know if that's something that we wanna talk about tonight, or, I know everything has to be, I, I'm assuming that would have to be voted on by the entire board. So I don't know if that wants, if we wanna bring that up and dis- you know, discuss this tonight. You know, we've talked about it before, you said it would take a little time and effort, but it was doable.
I mean, at this point in the game, like, and I'll just reiterate what I've said, like, the budget is ready to be reviewed with Dr. Powell, like. So that would have to be voted about the whole board, and I'm like, are y'all guys wanting me to build that salary schedule, or like, because I don't even know what that looks like for you guys, and who you want to be on it. Um, and then to go in the budget and change that, like, um, I was planning on delivering you guys a budget next week, like, they'll start looking at. Um, and then that would have to be done, and then meeting with everyone, and so that next meeting is the spring retreat, um, which wouldn't be when you guys discuss a budget, um.
Would the April meeting not be before the spring retreat? When is the April meeting, April?
Spring retreat's April tenth, board meeting is April fifteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the tenth.
But we, we wouldn't vote on anything at the retreat?
Yes.
We do?
There is a special call meeting after the retreat.
Oh, after, okay, okay.
Because I have to get that budget ready to present to the county.
Yeah.
Um, and then they have a week to review, they have seven, usually.
Six, six weeks, they meet on the twenty-fourth, so we've got till May the, the thirteenth to come up with something.
I have to present April twenty-eighth.
You can, can give them a, a blank form of it, to say, I don't know that we're working on it.
I can give them last year's budget.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
As long as you present it by May thirteenth, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, I want to let me.
Till May the thirteenth, they're, the county commission's gonna, they've got a meeting on June the twenty-fourth, so we've got till May the, May the thirteenth.
Well, let me, let me bring this up. Um, I know we're wanting to, we're looking at the possibility of going to different pay scales. And I think we all agree that's a possibility, but I think we've been too late this year to do it. I think whatever decision we make this year needs to be on the pay scale we presently have, whether we do a two percent, whether we do a three percent, and then we start after that digging into this other stuff and creating these other pay scales. I mean, the time is here, and like April had told us before, she's gonna have to file an extension with the county.
I'm not, it's not an extension.
No, it's not an extension, no. All we have to do, according to, to Ben Torres, Tennessee, you know, TSBA, all we have to do is file a, and, and let them know that we're working on it.
So you want me to present last year's budget where no one gets an increase to the county commission on, or to the budget and finance department on April twenty-eighth? Is that what you're saying you want me to do?
Or, or could a draft be?
A dra- all you gotta do is give them a draft or something.
No, I have to present an approved budget by you guys on April the twenty-eighth. Because it, board policy and state law says May first, they have to have a budget in their hands.
We're getting two misunderstandings.
Well, go look at board, there's board policy on it.
We did.
It says May first.
We, we did, we got.
I'm just saying that, this point, I've been working on this budget, and let me, I wanna say this, and then I will be done, 'cause I'm, I'm done talking about all this.
Okay.
Not trying to get upset about it, but I'm really getting upset about it, because I've spent two months on this budget, and you guys obviously have known y'all want to do this. And y'all waited till now to tell me that y'all wanna do this, and these are hours, and days, and minutes, and I have worked till midnight on this budget for the last two weeks, trying to get this budget done, so I can give it to you guys. And I just feel like that's just, to do this last-minute thing, to ask me to do, is not just something to ask me to do. Like, it's, it's pretty much asking me to give up my next two months to build a whole new budget.
I, I don't think anybody wants you to have to do that, but didn't we discuss this at the last work session? That we, would, there was a good possibility we would want a third pay scale?
It was discussed, but it never was actually.
I asked who was on it, and what it should look like, and no one had anything to tell me.
I, I thought that's what this meeting was about.
That, that's what we're, I think that's what we're doing now, we, we've got a month and a half?
No, I don't think so.
We got till the, the May, the middle of May?
Where are you getting the middle of May?
Forty-five days.
Mary Hetta just told us that.
Told who?
Us.
Us, Ben.
That we have till, and another board member. That, you know, we have till the twenty.
She's not telling us that.
I have April twenty-eighth on my schedule, and it's been on there since county commission passed the date in their meeting, 'cause they have to do all of that.
And this also came from a county commission.
What did Ben tell you about creating another pay scale?
That we need, that, I mean, I, I think Ben is being not up to date on all of this stuff, I'm sure he is. I'm just asking, I mean, that's who we, you know, we're just trying to get, get, uh, something ironed out here, April, I mean, we're not trying to back you in a corner, honey, but.
Well, you are, I mean, I'm gonna be.
Well, I mean, what do you wanna do?
I, I mean, it's a little late to build a pay scale, it's March the night next.
How, how many hours are we talking about, to, to build a new pay scale?
I mean, I have to start this payroll budget. I mean, I have to start this payroll budget all over again. And I spend eighty-five percent of my time on, I'll, I'll do whatever y'all want me to do, but I'm not happy about it. I'll just be that, I'm just not happy about how late this is to be given to me.
Okay. What I seem to be reading between the pages here is that majority of the board, or at least some of you are saying, we wanna give the teachers a pay increase, but we don't wanna give administrators and, and, uh, and supervisors a pay, uh, increase. And I haven't heard yet whether you wanna give the certified people an increase or not.
No, I don't think anybody's saying that.
No.
I know I don't feel that way.
That's not at all.
Well, you're only looking at a hundred thousand dollars to give the administrators and supervisors a three percent pay increase for this year. And, you know, I'm gonna have to agree with Beth for whatever, for whatever it's worth. I think that we need to go ahead and look at this. Everybody gets a three percent pay increase and then next year start looking at whatever you might wanna do, making out a whole new pay scale for everyone. You know, at one point in time, I know we had ten or fifteen different pay scales or different schedules and so forth. That's, that's been consolidated and I think it did, it's worked out real well. But that would be my recommendation, but I don't have a.
I agree with Dr. Powell for this year.
Ma'am?
I agree with you for this year. I think it's, I think it's too late. I think we've, this is our first real meeting of this committee and we've drug, we drug our rear end and so.
I, I don't, I don't think any of us were aware. I mean, we, we, we've got pretty much a whole new board. And I just don't think any of us were aware that we would need to start working on this two months before we did.
I gave a schedule out to you guys in, in a work session that laid out my schedule and when I work on budget. I did provide that. I think it was in January or whatever date we had a budget committee meeting that was given.
I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Frida.
Uh, if we give a three percent, uh, increase across the board, is that on their total salary or on the base salary of each individual?
It's on the base salary. So it goes on the base on the pay scale. So it'd be once on that certified pay scale, you would add three percent to each line.
Okay. And it wouldn't be based on the salary they're making now? It would be on the base?
So basically, it'd be on the base and then like if someone had extra days, that would increase the amount their extra days are because everything, everything in a calculation starts with the base. So like, if they have extra days or a supplement, it starts with the base and then if the base increases, everything below increases.
Does that make sense?
So, in other words, a three percent is not on top of supplements and all that sort of thing?
No, no, no. So it's, it's on the base, it's on the base and then they start with a new base and everything gets recalculated off of that base. That new base.
I think to answer your question, yes, that's basically what it boils down to, Frida K. I went back and looked and, and took a couple of salaries of supervisors and figured, okay, if we put three percent on their base salary, based on their degree and years of experience, take that number, how much that is per day, add that to their base salary, put three percent on that and leave their supplements as they are right now, freeze those. The majority of them would lose money this year. You wouldn't, they wouldn't be making next year what they make this year just based on a three percent of the base and the extra days without doing anything with their supplements or stipends and so forth. If that makes any sense. I, I thought about that. I looked at that and, and I looked at a couple of, three of the administrator salaries. Not the director, that's, that, that wasn't involved in it. This was other salaries, pe- I mean, other certified people in the central office. And they would be losing money based on that calculation of a three percent only on their base and their days worked and everything else freezes. So that, the, the three percent would be based, yes, basically on their base salary, their days worked, and then their, their additional, their additional supplements, whatever that might be. So yes, that would be based on, basically on their total salary as of this year, I think. Is that right, April?
So, go ahead, Frida.
I think I understand what you're saying. The three percent would be on the base and, okay, I'm sorry. I, I think I understand what you're saying. The three percent is on the base and then once that's calculated, the, uh, supplements would be, uh, off of that increased base salary. So that's gonna increase where they would be losing.
So they would get three percent and then their fifteen percent supervisor supplement would be on top, would be figured based on their increased salary.
I mean, they wouldn't get, if, for instance, right now, if they're getting a fifteen percent supplement for whatever position they may be in, that fifteen percent isn't, the fifteen percent is not gonna change, but the fact that you've changed their base salary and their days worked, then that number's gonna change also. It's not gonna increase but fifteen percent, but it'd be based on the base salary and the, and additional days they work. Follow me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just wanna clarify. I don't think anybody at this table or any board member would not want certified employees to, um, I'm sorry, non-certified employees, the classified, to not get an increase. In, in fact, I think it's totally the, to the opposite end of the spectrum there. I think we are very concerned about our paraprofessional, um, pay rates. And, and that's, that's really where a lot of this is coming from, is us trying to, you know, kinda close that gap and, and show our paraprofessionals that we, we do appreciate them. I don't think anybody would want to that, that vibe to go out that, that we didn't want to give them, you know, if it was up to all of us probably and money was unlimited, we would want everybody to get, you know, I mean, but I have heard sa- another board member say several times, not sitting here at this table, but that the seven percent that was given last year should hold over, especially our central office and admin employees who are, you know, at the top, um, should hold them over for several years. Because it's just not common to get a seven percent increase. I've never gotten a seven percent increase.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's.
Cost of living is two and a half.
I think it's what everybody that we're hearing outside of here and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, Holly, I mean, the thing that I hear, and I'll look at all of you right square in my face, that I'm hearing is with a three percent and you call across Middle Tennessee and all the schools and everywhere that you talk to, is when you give a, a percentage, you reach, keep getting richer and the poor, and the, and the poor keep getting poor. If you've got a, if you make a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, you're getting thirty-seven hundred, almost four thousand dollar raise in a year. If you don't make but fourteen or whatever, you're not making but fifteen hundred.
Not even that.
Not even that.
More like eight hundred.
But that, that same analogy Scott can come if you're giving the teachers a three percent and the classified staff a three percent, you're still gonna have that gap. So, that's, that's one thing that all the, a lot of the, the counties around here have done, and this is what I'm proposing, is this year, just to give a flat rate to everybody.
A dollar amount.
Just to give everybody in the school system a flat dollar amount. Everybody gets the same thing till we can get this thing resolved. And that's what Warren County has done. It's what, uh, some or other of the counties around here has done, is, is they done away with the percentage. And that's, it's just a, a thing that, and I've asked a lot of people that, and that would be fair for everybody this year.
So whether we determine if there's time to create that other pay scale now or if we, uh, chose to do it later, my personal opinion is it does need to be created whether now or later, because it offers us the flexibility to offer a different increase to those, whether it's more, or whether it's less, or whether it's equal, it would just, it, it, we may not even use it. But it, since you're saying it takes so much time to create it, if we could create it at some point, I think it would be beneficial for, for us to have that, whether we use it or not.
I'm just saying that in order to get an approved pay scale, that would be at the next board meeting, which is after the date of when we vote on the budget.
Yeah.
I don't know how to make that happen to a budget that's already been presented, that is almost ready for you guys to look at. Like, I just, in my mind, I don't know how to make that, make that work, like.
Like time wise, yeah.
Like, yes, and, and to get you guys what you need to review. And I don't know where y'all are getting your dates from, but I'm getting my dates from what I've always been given. Um, to the, from the county is when I need to give them a budget, their budget schedule that's passed by them every year and they tell me my data I have to present. Yes, and I can go present them the budget from last year. There's nothing. And then we can do about two hundred and fifty-two budget amendments in the next year to fix everything. Um, but I just, I'm not trying to be, I've spent hours and poured hours and, and I'm not saying that I shouldn't, but I've spent hours and poured hours into this budget to try to get the best raises for everyone. And for, just asked to go back and redo all of that at this, like, I don't know, it just, it's, and you, you will see, it's a very complex, complex creature, like, it's not just me popping a number in and it's done, like. I build this thing from scratch every year and I've worked on it since January.
Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
And it's just, it's not as easy as just comparing us to a, well, this, this, this person says that and this person says that. Well, their budget, they may have software that does it. I don't. I build everything from Excel spreadsheet.
Do we need to get you that software or what?
Well, I've looked for software and there's nothing out there right now with it.
Oh, wow.
Um, I've, there's, there's nothing like for school.
Where, where's, not, not, not being as smart as I am, where are these other people getting all their software?
People outside of, outside of school world that use have budget software. And I do have a list to look at, look at for that.
That would offer us that flexibility.
Complex budget. Like, it's very, um, basically every single person's salary has to be calculated individually and their benefits and their retirement and all of that. It's not just me clicking a number and it's done. Like, I don't have a software over here that just generates that information.
It sounds like, yeah, it sounds like you need a, a better tool.
Oh, I do.
Yeah, well, what can, what do we need to do to help? I mean, we, see, April, we didn't know this either.
I didn't know you were doing it all.
We had a noteworthy idea.
Till midnight, then I'll work on payroll budget.
I thought you had actual payroll software.
Outside of that, I have a, I also have things that continue to go up here. I can't work on budget here. There's no, there's no way. I have to close my door and lock both sides and close all the blinds if I wanna work on budget here. There's just, there's just no way.
Maybe, maybe you need some, some help.
I just, I've just, that's why I was so frustrated earlier because I'm like.
And in talking to.
It's not just as easy as saying, oh, we're just gonna do this, cause that's not how it works, like.
It sounds to me like we need, you need somebody that can handle the day-to-day stuff and then maybe you work on budget.
Well, I have five really great people that do that, but yes, there, I mean, there is a need. I've, and I've talked about this, and I've talked about this to them. There's an, like, there's a need definitely for that, but, um, another district have that need to have that, but I guess I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna ask for.
I know.
Because it's hard on me.
Maybe that could be a higher priority than some of these other positions that we have proposed.
Hey, I know that, that's what it's gonna take and I've always taken that time. I've always known that this, this time of year, from now, from January to October, I don't get a spring break. I'm in here doing, I'm in here working, cause I, right now I'm behind.
I know.
And it's okay. That's okay.
I'm your neighbor, I'll see when you come home.
Yeah.
It, it's okay, cause I know in October, when fall break gets here, I can go on fall break with my kids.
I know.
So I know that and I know that coming in and I knew that when I took this job.
And we appreciate you.
Absolutely.
And I just wanna, I want you guys to understand my frustrations.
I know, I know.
It's not just as easy as me saying, oh, I can, you, just, we're gonna do that.
Right.
There's a lot of, um, a lot of.
Frida, did you have something?
Oh, it, it's, that's concerning to hear that and, uh.
Very.
Thank you for telling us.
I, I, you know, that's the first time I've ever known that there, you know, that was that.
Well, I have known and.
And that, you know, we needed additional people.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for that.
Oh, I know you're not. I know you're not.
I did not ask for that when I said that.
But, no, I know you're not, but just hearing your frustrations, I mean, we need to be aware of that because.
And we, we weren't.
We've made a lot of improvements in there. We've made a lot of strides in there to make, to make things more automated.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah.
Of, of how it all works.
We wanna add positions up here, it sounds like that would be a priority.
I know you're not.
Well, then, then you hear, going back to what Scott's saying, you hear people saying, well, they've got more people up the central office, well, they need more people up there for.
I know.
What, did, did a previous person have that problem?
Um, so I think, you know, I've talked, when I talked and trained with Lisa Myers, um, cause she was previous to me, um, she pretty much worked, she pretty much worked around the clock at this time of the year. I mean, I knew that and when, cause we, she come in and trained me several different, different, different points in the year. And I know, and the people that work up here also know that they've always, they've also said it that, I mean, October to November, December is pretty relaxed in there. But I mean, it's just the time of, you know, when school opens and then you start working on budget and you gotta close the year and you got audits and there's just a lot going on in there and it's just, that's why I didn't mean to get frustrated early. It's just why.
Over years of experience, I've, I've, I've come to the conclusion, from February till May, you don't mess with the business manager. You let her, him or her, close your door and leave him alone.
Well, I'm gonna say February to October.
Scott, you mentioned a while ago about a, a, across the board flat salary. What number would you have in mind?
Well, where would us, where would we be at if we did that to get to the five or six hundred thousand dollars? If we did that, what would that, if we equaled that out to everybody?
But we can't do that with those teachers needing to get up to fifty thousand, right? Okay.
Yeah. So we would have to, have to do that to get them up to that point.
I'm just gonna rough estimate on my phone, cause I can't get it, my, can't log into my computer at the moment.
And again, I think it's too late to start something like that.
At what, the flat dollar amount?
To start trying to figure out dollar amounts for everyone.
I've already built the flats.
Just give a, a flat rate all the way across the board?
That, that sounds easier to me.
I mean, you're just gonna give everybody an amount.
What flat did you build, April?
Flat rate, you're talking about giving the si- the, the same flat rate to classified people as you do certified people?
Everybody.
You'd have to have close to three thousand for everybody this year and next year to get those teachers up to where we need them, wouldn't you?
We've got another year to do that though. I think there's too much spread between your classified employees and your certified employees just to give them a flat increase. There's.
But, but that might be what we're trying to do. That might be what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do.
Increase the spread or decrease it?
Decrease it. I mean, it's not gonna make any difference if we just give a flat rate across the board.
It'll make a difference, yes.
But everybody's getting the same rate this year. Everybody be getting the same rate.
It'd be more like a bonus is what you're talking about.
It's just a dollar amount.
So you're gonna give the dollar amount, the same amount, day, same dollar amount to the classified as you are the certified employees?
Yeah.
And you think that's equitable?
So we have seven, around seven fifty. That's just an estimate, um, of employees. So if we give, and I'm just shooting ballpark, is not, what we need to give to the teachers, say we try to, we're not gonna be able to give that to everybody, but we give the twenty-seven fifty-seven. And this is just salaries. This is not benefits. This is not anything like, anything else. It's two million dollars to give everybody that same rate.
How much?
Two million.
Twenty-seven fifty-seven.
Mm-hmm. So if I have that.
In the five hundred thousand dollar, I mean, the, uh, if we give, uh, I'm just picking a, a, a mountain. This is what other counties around us have done, is the reason why I'm saying this. So if we gave, if, what are we looking at? Uh, the to- piece of money we're getting?
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred thousand. So five hundred thousand divided by, how many did you say? Seven hundred fifty people?
Seven fifty.
Yeah. Say that, what would that be?
We can't use, we can't use the five thirty-five on certified. We can only use it on certified, so.
Right.
We have probably around four hundred certified employees.
Yeah.
Probably three, probably less than that.
Right.
So with the five thirty-five divided by, I'm gonna say four hundred.
I mean, what do you?
That's around thirteen hundred dollars for every certified employee.
How much?
Thirteen hundred dollars.
Thirteen hundred.
A flat amount for certified. And then if you gave that thirteen thirty-seven, so what I'm hearing y'all say is y'all wanna give that same amount to everyone, like, even our classified.
Mm-hmm.
So if we do that, Tom, seven fifty, that's a million dollars in just salaries and then you wanna add forty percent of that. So, if we do that, times seven fifty, that's a million dollars in just salaries, and then you want to add forty percent of that. For benefits, so about one point, four million dollars is what it would cost to. And that's just very rough numbers, basically.
So, that's pretty much where we're at now.
And so, I've got a three percent, yeah, so I've got a three, but.
So, if we give, uh, eight hundred.
You're about one point one now, I think.
Yeah, so if we give eight hundred.
You're gonna give eight hundred to everybody, eight hundred dollars to everybody?
Then we wouldn't be using all the money.
You wouldn't be using, um, let's see, eight hundred.
You're tossing TISA money.
So, then that would only put us at three twenty, so we're not using all of our TISA funds.
Okay.
So, we would have, the minimum we would have to give is that thirteen thirty-seven, and, and that is if I have the number right of teachers. Because that might be my new number and that might not, that might include, you know, the new teachers that we've added in.
And for some, that's gonna be in their benefit. Some, it might, the three percent's gonna be in their benefit.
Depends on where you're on the pay scale.
Exactly.
Okay, I have a question, isn't this similar to the bonus that we gave, where everybody got the same bonus?
It is, but we just gave it a one-time bonus and we didn't, we didn't put it in the pay scale, we just gave it to the employees.
But it was every employee, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Same amount?
Yes, ma'am, we did that with, um. Can't, I think, TISA, TISA fund?
Esser.
Esser, and then some, some other way too, I can't remember. But, yeah, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's the reason I said.
Remember, that is the time where I had said, we had some extra money come in. And, uh, I had said that since we were giving the two thousand this year, we could put that in fund balance and earmark it for the two thousand dollar bonus next year. But, uh, wanted to clear that up, but. So, at one time, we gave across the board two thousand to everybody, and that had nothing to do with the salary schedule, did it?
That's right, it didn't, it was just of additional funding, I think we had received. I think most of that was used with Esser, and then there was another. Yeah. We, I think most of it was Esser.
I know where, I know where it came from, it was Esser, it was extra money that came from the state and federal government. It did not come from, uh, general school or from the taxpayers in Coffee County or. Originally, it did, I'm sure, some parts of it, because we paid that for taxes. But, that, you know, anyway, that's just, I was just thinking it's similar as far as what we're doing. Only it's that. It stays on there, it stays, there, there, once we give this, that's their base salary, right? Is that correct?
So, once we give this raise, it'll raise the salary lines, is that what you're saying? Yeah, it'll raise the, this will raise the, if we give the flat amount, is what you're saying, it will go on the pay scale.
Yeah, it's not a bonus.
No, it's not a bonus.
It's a salary increase, yes, which is what we would want.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, if we give a bonus, that just goes away and then next year we may not be able to give.
Yes, exactly.
Doesn't affect.
Oh, no, I, no, I wasn't.
We want them to grow.
That's right.
Yeah.
I wasn't suggesting it as a bonus, I was just saying it's similar to, to the, the way we paid it. We, it didn't, it did not affect the sk, the salary schedule.
No, the, the last, usually give bonuses, it did not affect the salary schedule. And those are, that's because, and the reason we did that is because they came in after we already passed the budget. And so, in order to go back and remake those salary schedules and reload those in payroll and get a new budget. It was gonna be a huge amount of time and work, so.
Something else that I think is, is just, you know, worthy of our, our consideration is that this is also the year. That all of our certified employees are gonna receive that two thousand dollars of the voucher bill resolution that we, uh, passed. So, you know, even if raises or increases were lower this year. Maybe it would be an ideal year to do that because everybody's getting an extra two thousand anyway.
That two thousand, I don't think Holly would go toward the fifty thousand.
Uh, oh.
It doesn't count on the salary schedule?
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, if we had to pick a year that we were going to try to, uh, reduce increases. Maybe this would be a better year than a year that they're not getting an extra two thousand. Because of a bill that passed and we made a resolution, because every, and I don't know how that two thousand's gonna be taxed for these, these people, but.
Well, actually, they.
Um, they're gonna provide, the district, we'll, we'll give them, I'm sorry, didn't mean to over-speak, but.
No, I was gonna say that, the, from what I understand now, actually, the, the per, teacher will get a little bit over two thousand dollars, they're trying to. Get it where it nets out to two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, because they're gonna put in there, uh, fringe benefits, TCRS, social security, et cetera, et cetera, will be part of the money.
Okay.
That's sent from the state, so I think they're basically trying to get a two thousand dollar net out of this.
I think I understand it that way, and then I've also been told a different way, too, so.
That was the latest, that was the latest I got on it, that it would.
It'll be.
Yeah.
I'll get a list in April fifteenth, and we'll see what else.
Like twenty-three, like twenty-three hundred dollars per person. Uh, and that would include fringe benefits, except whatever y'all are on, on local fringe benefit, that would be social security, Medicare, uh.
I heard it's to gross up theirs, and I've also heard it's to help us with the benefits part, so.
Possibility.
I don't know which one is what it'll say when it comes out.
There, there's a, a commissioner's meeting Thursday night, right?
Tomorrow night.
I'm sorry, yes.
The budget funding meeting.
Okay, and so, based on what i- is said in that meeting. Um, I mean, what if that affects this, these increases? What if the commission doesn't approve our budget? Uh, you know, and here, and, of course, this hadn't been voted on. But I'm just saying, you know, we may want to take that into consideration. If things don't pass or go well for us tomorrow night, you know, we need to really, I think, consider that.
So, what happened is, because we, uh, not because of us, because last year, the county had trouble getting their budget passed. Um, as a whole, not with us, ours was already there and we didn't cause any kind of delay to them, but. They were delayed because there was some, you know, controversies on their side with pay, pay or whatever. But, um, basically, if that budget wouldn't have passed, so they had to call a special meeting on whatever the last day of June was. To pass the budget, and if it didn't pass at that point, then we would have reverted back to our old budget, so that was, if. Um, does that kind of answer your question? So, like, they don't pass our budget and we can't get them a budget that they'll pass.
Right.
Then we'll revert back to last year's budget.
Right, they, they would just give us the same amount they gave us last year, correct?
This year's, we'll revert back to this year's budget, and that, no one, like, that would mean no one would get a raise from this year.
Right.
And then I don't know what that would mean for, like, our teachers, that.
So, that's what I'm saying, you know, we may want to see what shakes out tomorrow night.
And I also, you know, that worries me too, like, that worries me, and then it worries me too, like, you know, taking this over there and then they don't want, you know. To approve it and then.
Yeah.
I don't know, there's a lot of worry.
Yeah.
I have a lot of worry right now about all of this, so.
Yeah.
Well, April, if I'm figuring correctly, um, we are twenty-seven fifty-seven away from getting up to the fifty thousand. So, if we go with a flat rate this year, um, we're looking at. Did you mention thirteen thousand, Scott?
Thirteen hundred.
Fourteen twenty-two sixty-nine would be the three percent. So, we're gonna be almost up to that three percent if we do the thirteen hundred, and it goes on their base salary. And then we can, next year, when we redo the pay scales, we can look at, at what we do then.
So, the three percent would get us fourteen, on that very first line, it would get us to fourteen seventeen. So, it'd get a little, it would get us a little more ahead on, you know, the teacher pay scale than just giving that flat rate.
Yeah. But the flat raise, if that's what we end up doing, then that's gonna get us pretty close.
Yeah, so that would be, I think it was, and I'd have to go look at it because not everyone counts as far as certified, so like nurses, like, they. They're not counted in that TISA funding number. Um, basically, it's a licensed educator, so I would have to pull that list to see who was. So, the four hundred may be high, so it might actually be more than that thirteen, whatever I, number I gave out.
Okay.
Earlier.
And so, we're not but seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. To getting everybody to where they need to be anyway.
Yeah.
And we don't, we've got thirteen of that, of that thirty-nine, that's not but four hundred and twenty dollars away from that.
Yeah, and so, if we did that, it would just, like I, earlier, I think I said in the other meeting, that. Those zero and one lines would go to fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And then nobody, and then you wouldn't have a step, so like, you look at your salary schedule, right now, you have that step included in each one of them. And basically, they would get a raise, but they would only get the percentage raise each year, but they wouldn't get that step that everyone else is getting, so basically, they would, you know, not get that step raised. And I, I don't want to deter, you know, I don't want to deter people from coming. From coming here knowing that, you know.
Right.
Year zero and one's gonna get the same amount of money each year and there's no step. Because, you know, the steps are like seven hundred and for bachelors, I think step is like seven seventy-nine is what it is. Not much, but still, that's, that, that means a lot to someone who's starting out. And so, I don't want to deter, you know, people starting out from, you know, making the most they can make.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is that I'm hearing from the, the teachers across the board, and, and making it as fair for everybody. You know, from our custodians all the way up, you know, for this year, after everybody getting a seven percent raise last year. Which was a seven percent raise, but it was spread out. Like I said, the higher, the more money you made, the more raise you got. The less money you made, the less money you got, still got a three percent, but, and this year. By giving a flat rate across the board to everybody, then that equals out, you know, everybody's getting the same.
So, you said Warren, Warren County did that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think, do you think they gave it to everyone, like, all of their classifieds?
But when you do that, though, you're gonna have to change every one of these classified salary schedules for next year.
Yeah, in some years, we've given more to classified, so when we really worked on, so the first year we worked on pay scales. We really worked on certified to try to get the even, so what you see in front of you, so like, if you look at the bachelor's line, if you subtract each line, I think it's the same amount increase each year. If you subtract each line and the masters, it should be the same amount each year, so when you give that percentage raise. It, it keeps it, it keeps that same amount, like, from fluctuating. What we dealt with was, in years, middle of the pay scale, and I don't know why it was like that. But, middle of the pay scale, like, one year you'd get a fifteen hundred dollar raise and the next year you'd get two hundred. So, there was just some variables that we needed to clean up, and that, so that's why we worked on the certified scale, I think. The year we worked on that, we gave a three percent raise, we worked on the pay scale and gave a three percent raise, and I'm looking at people in the room because all the years blur together for me.
Yeah.
Um, and then, the next year, we worked on the classified scale. Um, we worked on doing kind of the same thing. Um. Because there were jumps, like bus driver line, year fifteen, I think, there was a, a hundred dollar raise, and then the year, the next year, they got twenty. So, there were some just crazy things going on in the pay scale. So, we worked, we spent a lot of time building new pay scales, presenting those, and so, there was some. Common understanding on how the step cra, raises happen. Um, so, in the year that we worked on those pay scales, I think it ended up being a seven percent raise for classified. And then we gave a four percent, I think, for certified, so. There are years, like, where our certified got more, and then there are years where our classified's gotten more based on that work.
Okay.
So, that's, you don't have to give, as long as they're on a separate pay scale, you don't have to give the same percentage raise, like.
Yeah.
It just makes it incredibly difficult if you don't have the pay scale to give the raise to, and you, you can't break people off the pay scale.
Which is why I suggested, whether now or if we don't have time later, that it, it would be beneficial to have that third pay scale, just to give us the flexibility.
And we used to have it, three years ago, and then, so when we worked on pay scales, that was one of the things, we got rid of it. Because, um, most counties don't have free pay scales, so we, when Dr. Lawson, we did all, we did all the work on the pay scales. Of, everyone that he called comparable to us didn't have a supervisor scale. Everyone was paid off the certified scale, because technically, those are your certified employees.
Yeah.
And those, um, people just got whatever stoppings, and I'm just giving y'all the history of kind of how everything laid out. Those people got the percentages on top of the certified pay scale, so. Kind of did all the pre-work and then we started trying to work on the pay scales and try to get, you know, to make them make sense, because they really used to not make sense, like.
According to, to Ben Torres, we're about the only last. School district that's doing the, the percentage anymore. Most everybody has gone to the flat rate because, for this reason, for this very reason.
And that's usually at the direction of the director and what they want to present to the board, and usually, because. Usually, the director and I work together to build a budget that's feasible, that we can maintain with fund balance or maintain revenues.
Mm-hmm.
And that's usually at the direction, so I don't. Outside of this year, because I know Dr. Powell and I've talked about it, but, uh, his interest conflict of impossible with, you know, being on Manchester City Board. I've usually been given direction by the director and said, okay, I want you to start here.
We, we understand it.
And so, this year, I've kind of just tried to put in my mind of what we need to do for our teacher scale. And what we can do for classified, and, and so, nothing to Dr. Powell, but. I, I just, I'm trying to work on based on what I've learned in the past four years with.
Did, did Lisa have a third pay scale when she was here, or Lisa Myers?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, there was a third. So, the supervisor pay scale didn't go away for maybe two years ago? I think it was two years ago.
Okay.
It was, it was just central office supervisors.
We just have two now.
So, the teach, so, yes, that's a good point, Lindsay. Um, principals and assistant principals have always been paid off of the certified pay scale.
Yeah.
The only separate pay scale, um, that we've had is for supervisors up here.
At central office, I don't think.
Yeah, your, your par, paraprofessional salary, I mean, you've, we've already got that, so all you would do is add another couple ones. Most of your people is on your paraprof, paraprofessional anyway. Right?
Mm, up here?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Over seventy-five percent of your people on your paraprofessional, right?
Let's just talk about my people, they're on the.
Well, the whole school system. Is most of them, about seventy-five percent of them's on paraprofessional, right?
So, it's with about four hundred, three hundred split.
Yeah.
So, there's about four hundred certified, four, three fifties.
So, we've already got that one, so, I mean. You would just be doing, if we went to the other two, when, when, and if we ever, you know. But that's what I'm, I'm saying, it's, you know, and, and the reason why April and everybody else in here, you know. Us getting here, us, we're, half of this board is new. We're drinking water from a fire hydrant. We're hiring a, a superintendent, we're doing all of this stuff, and, and, and so, we've had meetings, two or three meetings a week. So, we get it.
I understand.
We get it, trust me, we get it. Uh, you know, uh. So, and, and we're trying to make everybody happy, and that's pretty much virtually impossible. But we're doing our best.
Well, if, if you change this, if you change what you're talking about, Scott, you're gonna make some people very unhappy. And it's not gonna present a good image to the board or the folks that are working here. And we've had this whole discussion, it's been centered around a hundred thousand dollars all afternoon long.
You're talking about creating a third pay scale, is gonna make people unhappy?
That's leaving everything like it is as of now, Holly. Three percent for everyone, you got eight hundred thousand for the teachers, you've got a hundred thousand for the. Uh, admin and, and supervisors, and you've got two hundred thousand for the classified, that's a three percent for everyone. And, and I don't have any problem with what Scott's saying, yes, you may need to do that, that, that would be somebody, that would be. Whatever y'all decide next year and whoever the new director comes in. But, as it stands right now, we've been discussing the difference between a hundred thousand dollars and a budget for this school year, for this next school year. And we're still where we were when we started.
But your lower people would be getting the same amount of money, they're gonna say.
No, they'd be getting the three percent, Scott, like everyone else.
I mean, it's a lower dollar amount, just because their, their pay rate's lower.
Well, sure it is. But it's not, but it's gonna be that way irregardless of what you do.
Yeah. Unless you, unless you do dollar, flat dollar amount, and everybody gets the same.
If you give everybody the same dollar amount, it's still gonna be that gap, folks.
Oh, it's definitely, yeah, I mean, there's no way around that.
I, I have some.
Twenty-five hundred dollars and give certified twenty-five hundred dollars.
I like to say something.
That's not gonna do anything.
Go ahead, Frida.
Speak up, speak up.
I would just like to say something. Um, I guess the issue is that there's, you know, different categories for people that work in our school system. And there's some that have a lot more responsibility than others. And they're evaluated, and they, they go home with this on their shoulders. And they've gone to, you know, gotten their degrees and gotten to where they are, and we don't need to forget that. And also, I have a problem with some of our teachers not making as much, you know, we're talking about one end to the other. We need to, we need to make sure that we're getting our teachers salary comparable, at least, to non-certified. Because there are some teachers in our school system that make less than, uh, non-certified employees, and I was very shocked to see that. And, uh, and I, I understand where every. Everybody's coming from, and, uh, and I am for getting a, you know, salary schedule for separate, because it just makes sense, but. I think Dr. Powell's right, and, and all of you there, I think I'm hearing everything, that we probably need to wait on that, but. But, uh, I do wanna say that, that I, I have a problem with teachers' salaries not being as high as they should be.
And, and that's, that's what I was talking about, is trying to get everybody, at least this year, from everybody that, that, that I've, that I've talked to from, you know. And in, in investigating this through everybody and trying to do what's right for everybody and it's just, it's, it's impossible.
Well, I don't think it's right, Scott, to pay teachers a salary increase and classified a salary increase, but not pay admin people a salary increase. That's my personal opinion and my professional opinion for what it's worth, but y'all make the decision.
I just want to say that this is a tough committee to be on.
Very, very, very tough.
Walking down here without having lasers pointed at you, son.
People's back pockets. It, it's, it's tough.
But let me, let me, let me throw something else at you. I'm not gonna throw at you tonight, I'm not gonna throw at you anyway. But looking over the things that Mr. Shores and I have looked at this year on request, we've got several, several employees that are wanting additional supplements for their after-school work. Some of them that are doing things that are not getting any kind of stipends at all.
Yeah.
We haven't even looked at that. I'm not even gonna mention that to you because, but that's.
We know, we know.
When it, when it starts coming to start increasing everybody's supplements and so forth.
Yeah.
That's when it's gonna get tough, in all honesty.
There's, there's several groups that are not compensated for their extra time after school or in the summer. Um, like we were talking about those, uh, CTE clubs.
Yeah, well, we don't.
But we don't wanna get into that.
You're right, right.
Um, there are some.
But that's what, that's why, you, you said this difficult, this committee is difficult. It, it could get more difficult.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just saying, you know, it, it's a difficult committee to be on because finding that balance between the taxpayers holding us accountable for how we spend their money and knowing how hard our principals work. Um, and, and our central office employees and our teachers, everybody. I know everybody works hard and everybody is so deserving, all the way down, yes.
Okay, can we, can we have a recommendation from this committee to go to the board?
That we stay on the same pay scale for this particular year and we begin looking at what we might wanna do for the next time.
No, we can't vote on it, cause it's not a voting committee, but.
Right.
That, that is my recommendation.
If, if we wanna add that third pay scale, when would be enough time for us to start talking about it and you to start work, where you're not pressured?
We need like an August meeting to start working on it.
Okay.
And then we need to get that, like whatever work, we need several meetings to work on it.
Okay.
And that gives us time to get it on the December board meeting. Cause it'll have to be passed by the whole board. And then from that point in January, I can start building.
Okay, so a lot sooner.
And if we're.
Yes, and that will, that will have to be.
Oh, I, I don't wanna speak for the whole board.
No, we don't want to do that, no, no. And if I were gonna, if I were gonna be back, I would be in favor of sitting down and looking at the, the third or fourth pay scale.
Right, absolutely. When we have time.
Yes.
Yes.
When we don't kill April, cause to me, to keep April is worth a hundred thousand dollars, frankly.
Well, there's always that possibility that you're gonna lose some of them. You know, you don't ever know. Of course, you may lose some teachers too. And I think this fifty thousand dollar base is gonna, gonna create some problems for all school systems, not necessarily for Coffee County. Uh, because you've had the latitude in the past to set your scale pretty much where you want to, but everybody with a minimum of that fifty thousand, it's gonna increase everybody in the state something. So, you know, we may have teachers that now live in Grundy candidate come down here because of the pay scale difference. But two years from now, it may not be that much different anymore. You don't ever know, of course.
Well, let's not take on tomorrow. It's enough today.
Well, the, you know, like I said a while ago, the par professionals is over half the, half the, uh, workers in the system.
I don't think it's over half. I mean, if you, if you include subs in there, maybe, but I don't think it's over half.
Yeah.
It may be a little less than certified.
This is a whole different topic, but have we talked about increase in substitute pay?
That's what I was gonna say. That's something we hadn't even.
Okay.
We've done it, we haven't done it in a couple of years, because here's what we began to with that, is you'll lose some classified employees to go be a sub.
Oh, wow.
Because we got, we gotta work on that pay scale before we can. We tried to look at that as an hourly rate. So we, I think we kinda went to max what we can do until we really get our classified scale up, because you'll have people that'll leave.
That's a good point.
Us and go be a sub for more money.
Right.
And so.
Yeah.
No.
If I gotta be there.
It's held on where we're at for right now, until we can work on that pay scale a bit more.
Okay.
Well, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, if, if you've been a cafeteria worker here for twenty-five years, you make eighteen dollars an hour.
For twenty-five years?
For twenty-five years.
I know. What was it? Was it eight dollars?
You know, we.
Yep, uh, three, four years ago, started at eight ninety-eight.
But they're having.
Eight ninety-eight an hour?
Three or four years ago, before we dealt with work.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, she's not in our budget.
Oh.
You know, and, and that's. Yeah, I mean. Yeah. Yeah, and that's the reason why I brought that up, was, cause you were here, you know, and it's.
Yeah, so we started at eight dollars and something, three years ago, three years ago. Before we did all the work that.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's our, that's the concerns that I have is, you know.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the reason, again, why, because you were here and, and you was, you know. Yeah. Right, right. And, and we, we've got to consider, I don't want to go out of this meeting without these people knowing that we at least mentioned them. We're having a hard, are, are you having a hard time getting employees? Okay. You know, that's, uh, custodians and, and all of these people, assistant custodians, bus drivers, Lord have mercy.
We are having a hard time getting.
We're having a hard time getting bus drivers.
Tim and Matt drive almost every day.
Go ahead.
Go, Frida.
Um, I, I think we need to also remember that there is a, a benefit to working for Coffee County Schools besides just the salary, it's the insurance. And a lot of places don't have that. So that's something we need to think about. And, and as far as the food service program, you know, in the future, the county may have to help fund it. Because we may not be getting as much money for it in, in the future. I hope it doesn't change, but that's just something we may have to think about too. So we're, we're really in, in the midst of a lot of changes for public education. And it's gonna fall more on the local government and the state government to fund all this, so.
That is a great point, Frida, about the insurance. We do have really good insurance.
Everything will stay stable, but we can't, we can't guarantee it. Pardon?
I said, that's a really good point about the insurance. We do have really good insurance. Our benefits are really good.
And, and I know, and that's sad, though. A lot of people work just for the insurance and they certainly need higher pay. I, I agree with that, for sure. But thank goodness, we do have that benefit for them.
Yeah.
And I also add to that, a lot of people.
To a budget too, just like, uh, just like Ms. Cotton's, you know, her budget has to include insurance and everything. And on a fixed amount that comes into the county.
A lot of people just work with that schedule for their children. Be on that same schedule with their children.
It's a great schedule. Wish I had it.
Summer job.
No, thanks. She couldn't pay me enough. I'll stay where I'm at. Anything else?
It's all we got, so.
So y'all want me to work a three percent for everyone and any other options that I can present to you? In the, um.
I, I think we ought to have the flat rate, you know, uh, have at least two options.
Is that something that we're, we're gonna be able to vote on at the next board meeting? No, not here. I'm talking about at the next board. We can't make any decisions here, right?
Right.
Yeah, or can't.
So I can, I've already done a flat rate for certified and it's easy. I can change the number and it changes everybody. I did not do that with classified, so that will take me a little bit of time.
Would you be willing to?
Um, so I was trying to give y'all budget at the end of some point next week. Um, it may be the week after, maybe you may just get it like a few days before, like, because I already have all that built and I think I can just go in there and add to their salaries and I think, but I'm not.
If it would give us another option for when we go to vote on it, you know, it might be.
I don't think you're gonna, just from what I've seen with the class, with the certified, I think it's gonna be more than that. I don't know if it's gonna be a feasible option, but I definitely can give it.
Yeah. I mean, if it, if that's, if you're willing to do that, I think. And it would be something for us to at least look at and consider. What, I don't know. What do you guys think?
Well, I, I think, I mean, I'm just, I'm speaking from people that come to me, that.
Frida, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear all that. I'm, I'm just hearing parts at times. What was the question? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. The question was, do you want April to calculate a, an, an across-the-board for everyone figure? Whatever that might be. Everybody would get the same raise irregardless of where they are.
Dollar amount.
Dollar amount.
Percentage, just to have another option on the table.
Something that you would wanna have presented to the board for an option versus a three percent versus across-the-board for everyone? I think that's the question.
Yeah.
Right, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause we don't wanna waste our time.
That would be good for the entire board to, to stay there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To have that option.
So are you looking at, um, the same flat amount as certified? Like everybody getting the same flat amount?
Mm-hmm.
Based on maybe that five hundred and thirty-five thousand divided by the number of employees that would be? And so then everyone would get that flat amount?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that way it keeps us from not getting into our taxpayer dollars, you know.
I mean, I've already done the flat amount for certified, so over fifty percent of it's done.
Okay.
And so.
Yeah.
I think it will just be as easy as me adding that flat amount to their salaries. And then I think I can. For Carlin, yeah. Okay, cause we have to, she's a separate budget, so she has. And we also try to look at that too for, you know, good point, good point, Carlin. We also try to look at for the federal budgets too, to see if it's maintainable there as well.
Okay.
And I don't know that, um, it's gonna be tight for us, because we are, we're already really tight there. So we try to look at all those things and see if it, you know, if it's doable. Cause then otherwise, you know, his fed budget, obviously those are positions that are needed, that we have to have. And federal, his part of federal just picks up what general doesn't. So we have to pick up some of his aides. That would also cost us more.
Yeah.
So I can.
Yeah.
Can draw it up and then.
Go ahead.
Do you have it in your budget for the three percent?
I couldn't understand what.
You do for the three percent?
Hold on just a minute, Frida.
Okay.
But that's more doable for you as far as your budget, okay.
Okay, go ahead, Frida.
Uh, I, I was trying to hear what they were saying, how this would affect which would, uh, which would be the, uh, most. That would not be as good for the federal projects. I couldn't understand what was saying, being said.
So basically Charlie's budget, which is the fed budget, federal programs budget, um, it's very tight. Kinda like Title I, it's the same situation, you know, we're crossing our fingers that we make it each year. So if we did the flat raise across the board, we'd also have to look at how it would affect those budgets. And we don't have numbers yet and they're saying we won't have preliminary budgets for a long time. That's the words they used. Um, so we would have to look to see if that would even be feasible, you know, for us to do for federal. Or we would have to think about.
You would have to look and see what. Oh, I see what you're saying. There may not be enough funding to, to, uh, allow for a three percent increase across the board.
Um, the three per, the three percent or I think this year we were pretty tight and I think General School had to pick up two aides. No, I don't. I think we may end up losing. I think we may end up having to move a few more of his aides to the general budget. So it's kind of supplemental.
Yeah, and that was my point earlier. It seemed like it's hit us sooner than later. So, so what you're saying is either way, if we do a three percent across-the-board increase or just a stated amount for every employee, we, the general school may have to pick up, uh, some of the, add to the salaries of some in the federal projects or the food service. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. So if it's a three percent, it may be one or one and a half. If we do a flat, it could be four. I, I'm just using general numbers. Um, but yes, we, we anticipated that to happen this year and we planned for it in the general budget and it happened. And so we want to do that also this year again to make sure.
Do that in the past? Have we had to do any of that in the past?
No, ma'am. We've not had to do that. We've always made it, just barely made it.
Okay, I, I knew I hadn't, I had never recalled having to add, you know, add to those funds from general.
Majority of his employees are teachers' aides, or fed teacher's aides. So he might have, I think, one teacher, one and a half teachers in there, but majority of his budget is teacher aides, so.
Which, which is gonna be the most, uh, expense, giving a dollar amount to each employee or doing a three percent across the board?
Um, just looking at the flat amount just for certified, cause I've already looked at that to see if we could give the entire fifty thousand this year. Get everyone to fifty thousand. And it's gonna be about, um, I think it was around five hundred thousand dollars more to do it that way. Um, so if you think about, and then I just gave a three percent classified raise. So I would think it's gonna be pretty substantial to try to give a flat amount.
Is that including what you might?
Do what? Repeat it again, Frida.
Uh, is that including what you, you're projecting that you might have to add, uh, to the, uh, food service and the special ed budget?
No, so that's just mine and I give, I, she has fund balance, but I've just given her, her payroll stuff uh, this week so she could start working on it. So I don't know that she has a projection of what she's gonna be yet, so.
But we will have to add to the special ed budget, is that correct?
Um, we may have, it just depends on that. We're probably gonna have to pick up some aides. And we, we try to plan for that every year and we did, we planned for that every year and it's not happened until this year, so. Um, he, he lost funding this year, which was really odd, cause we, last year we, I think we increased a hundred thousand. But then this year we lost around four, was it four thousand? So we didn't lose as much as, we didn't have to pick up as much as we thought we were gonna have to, but we did have to pick up some aides this year. Cause those are not really optional. We have to have those positions. So where, you know, Title I, I don't wanna say it's optional, but those are supplemental to our day. Obviously, they're very important to our school system, but, so.
Well, I mean, and, and I, I. We're, it's tight for everybody. Economy's changing and, and, and with this, with the YouTube world and Kevin and you last week talked about going to the grocery store. I had, I got bombarded with that one. You know, there, everybody's going to the same grocery store. You know, so it's. Everybody, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. I ever, we are elected by everybody. We have to be. That, that's, that's, yeah, well, I got, we got other taxpayers too that were getting bombarded by the other taxpayers. That was the one that brought up the thing about going to the grocery store. So just, they're all, we got two, we two got, we got two grocery stores in Manchester and so they're all good. That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do. It, it's, it's a tough job.
And I think all of us pay taxes too.
Everybody else's is too. They go to the same grocery store as y'all go to. And that's, I got reminded of that twice. I hate that you feel that way. I hate that you feel that way, but we have to revoke, you know.
Anything else? Folks, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.